Would you like me to call the roll?
Please do.
Uh, Mr. Blakely.
President.
Uh, Mr. Harrison.
Present.
Mr. Michelle.
Present.
Uh, Mr. Rodriguez has let me know, uh, due to a family matter, he will not be joining us this evening. Uh, Ms. Vaughn. And likewise, Council Vice Pres- Council President, uh, is going to be absent this evening, uh, as previously explained, uh, and Madam Caldwell Wilson is the Chair.
Present.
Yes ma'am. Uh, also present, uh, for the Trenton Water Works, uh, is Mr. Mark Lavenberg, the Director of Trenton Water Works. Uh, Mr. Lavenberg has some, uh, guests with him that he will, um, uh, let you know about, uh, at the appropriate time, and Constance Ludin, Constance Ludin is here as well, Matt. Uh, would you like to proceed with the public hearing?
Please do.
Mr. Collins?
Yes, sir.
Um, President, uh, President Caldwell Wilson?
Yes, 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 Mr. Lavenberg.
I would like to make, uh, a brief statement.
Regarding, is it regarding the budget?
No.
I don't think that's appropriate, um, Councilman, since this is a budget meeting, yeah.
No problem, thank you.
Go ahead, Mr. Collins.
Mr. Lavenberg, uh, you are up with the Trenton Water Works, it is your floor, sir, thank you.
Okay, um, I'm very pleased to announce that I'm here with, uh, Joe McIntyre from the, uh, Missouri Utility, and Joan Garrett, our Budget Officer. Um, I appreciate the two of them being here tonight and to go through the budget. As we're well aware, we're pretty much down the road as far as this budget goes, but, uh, we're happy to report that, um, you know, what we submitted, we are well within the, the framework of the budget, uh, that we have, um, and we plan on being there all the way through the end. Uh, I'm gonna let Mr. McIntyre take it from here relative to the sewer budget or any questions you may have relative to that.
Oh, I thought we were doing water first, no? Would you prefer to do the sewer first?
I, I, I would prefer to do the sewer first, if that's okay?
Okay.
Alright.
Okay, Mr. McIntyre, paint us a picture of your budget here.
I'm sorry?
Mr. Lavenberg, just, just a note for the record, the, uh, Mr. Cruz and Mr. Cherry have arrived, uh, and Mr. Bridges, uh, is, uh, also on the line.
Appreciate it.
Hello, everybody.
Hello, good evening, everyone, Madam Vice President.
Yeah, hi, Mr. McIntyre, just paint us a picture of this budget.
Good evening, Council Joe McIntyre, General Superintendent of the Sewer Utility, can you hear me okay through the mask?
I'm sorry?
Can you hear me okay through the mask?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Uh, yeah, as Mark said, we're about seventy percent of the way through this budget. Fortunately, we're well within our budget and doing well to hold our fiscal responsibility. Uh, you might notice that this budget, uh, for the two thousand and, uh, twenty-one fiscal year is actually about one four and one five million less than the previous year's budget. So, uh, while we're holding the line fiscally, we're holding the line on a tighter budget. As we've talked before in the past, in the Sewer Utility budget, there is very little, um, discretionary spending. A lot of that costs are pretty much fixed costs, but I'd be happy to go through and answer any questions I can for you this evening.
Okay, so, so if you would just kinda go down and explain some of the bigger ticket items here, and the, you know, what, what?
Well, some of our larger budget items, uh, are the typical large budget items that we have every year. And essentially, probably the biggest one that jumps out is our sludge disposal. Uh, our sludge disposal, about one point two million dollars a year, that's an annually big contract. Um, you, you know, we have to, we remove sludge from the wastewater, and, uh, it has to be trucked out and disposed of properly, so that, that's a big number that jumps out. The other things, like energy consumption, uh, where-
What page, what page is that on?
Will we give you the account number, uh, two eight nine?
Yeah, the, the account number for the sludge was account number two eighty-nine, that's on the first page.
It, uh, Madam Vice President, it may be page two. Uh, uh, he was talking about sludge, sludge disposal, one-
That, that I saw, yeah, okay.
Okay.
And some of the other larger line items as well are things like energy consumption, uh, particularly electricity, and that's, uh, up, uh, on, uh, lighting, heat lighting and power, uh, two twenty. Um, and again, you know, it just, you know, we, we, uh-
Wait, I can't find that, just what page are you on? You need to tell me where you're referring to.
Same, same page, same page, uh, under, um, account two twenty, which is heat, light and power.
Under-
Are they on page numbers there?
I, I can't find that.
It's three hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars.
Oh, that's not on page two.
Maybe it's on page one, uh, cause I have it as page one.
Oh, okay.
And, and on my page one is, it's right near the bottom, it's like the fourth on the bottom.
What's the number?
Uh, the last three are two eight nine.
Two eight nine?
Are you still looking at what's slices?
Are we looking at, they got water up instead of sewer?
I'm sorry.
They gotta put water up, sewer up, not water, I don't know who's in charge of the machine. Here we go.
Sorry about that.
Okay.
No, go, go down one more, Matt, if you don't mind. Are you sure this is, uh, I don't think-
Two eight nine?
Two eight nine, oh, there you go, 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 alright.
Yeah.
So if we're looking at the screen, yeah, near the, yeah, about the bottom third-
I haven't found two eight nine.
Okay, if Matt has it up on the screen, if we're all seeing the same shared screen?
Sewer two?
And, and Council Vice President, we are on the sewer budget, not the, not the water budget, but-
I understand, I have, I have-
Good enough.
I have, yeah, I have the sewer budget up, but my, but I, I'm going with my budget book here, so I need, I can't find two eight nine in here.
It's, um-
Oh, wait a minute, that, that's sludge disposal.
Yeah.
That's correct. Okay, so then you, you, you mentioned something about electrical.
Yes, the-
Well, that's another-
Yes, I, we, we also talked about power, heat, light and power, which is another large line item, that's, uh-
Yeah, but that, that's the one I couldn't find.
Alright, which number is that? Sorry.
Um, that's actually up, uh, at, um-
Two twenty is the account.
Yeah, it's account two twenty.
I'm sorry?
It'll be up higher on the page.
Yeah, just higher on the page, two, two two zero.
Right, heat, light and power.
I got it, two two zero 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 one.
And the, the majority of that is actually electricity at the treatment plant itself, the three hundred and fifty-eight thousand. Uh, other larger items, um, would be, got a two seventy, the two, two, uh, two hundred and seventy-six thousand, still on the, uh, and, yeah, basically right, right near the top, the two hundred and seventy-six thousand. That's basically for all the maintenance and work on all, uh, on plant equipment in the sewer plant.
Okay, I, I don't have that, near the top, what page?
That is page two.
Page two.
Okay.
That's account two seventy, it's a few lines down from the very top.
Okay, two seventy-six?
Yes.
Is that always, that's always set high, right?
Yeah, that runs out high every year. There's, there's a lot of, these are all for, you know, all the pumps and valves, and other appurtenances in, in the plant itself. And I'm just looking for other larger items, we talked about the sludge disposal, um-
Do you have professional services in there?
Yeah, the, the professional services, the two ninety, uh, let me get that other page.
Joe, you wanna sit here?
Oh, no, it's okay, as long as I'm here.
Yeah, just-
Yeah, and professional services, that's a, a, a general category for all the subcategories, and that's all of our, um, our treat, our, our various testing. Uh, most of it is actually a state and DRBC, uh, and federal driven testing. Uh, there's a little bit of money available in there for any consultant work, but we haven't really used much of that over the past year or two, um, but, uh, a lot of it is, uh, sludge and special testing is the majority of that cost. And then o- other expenses, under, uh, two ninety-nine, um, those are our permit, for the most part, our permit charges. And the, the biggest one is our discharge permit to the Delaware, which is running somewhere up in the hundred and seventy thousand dollar range. But, uh, all various other, uh, smaller permits are in that, that category as well.
So, when I look at the deferred charges,
Okay.
On page, on page four, there was, there was no- I'm sorry?
Sorry, we're just following along.
Okay, on page four, under deferred charges, which is eighty-five zero zero, bunch of zeros.
Yes.
There was nothing in there for the actual two thousand and twenty. Somebody needs to turn off their phone.
Yeah, there was no deferred charge last year for sewer, I don't think.
Yeah, but there's nothing in there for what we spent on deferred charges for two twenty.
Nine hundred, where's that?
Uh, it might be in a different account. We have it at eighty-five hundred there.
Okay, okay.
And the number's thirteen.
Yeah, so what's the question, do you want me to answer it, Joe?
Yes, please.
Uh, what's the, the side of the-
There's a lot of noise, there's a lot of noise in the background, is that somebody shuffling papers?
Yes, that was us.
Oh, okay, yeah, that's really loud.
Um, I'm gonna, you know, Joe's pointing to me, the deferred charges for this year is thirteen thousand five eighty-six oh six, we didn't have any last year, I'm checking my other, there wasn't any, it's-
What are the deferred charges, and why do we have them this year?
Uh, the com- the compo- the, the reason behind it, I don't know, because it's ran out, runs out of finance, but it's basically something, something got shorted in that budget, and then we had to raise it in next year's budget. So the actual, uh, specific of it, it's probably, it could be debt related, but if I, if I, you need that answer, I'd have to give it to you tomorrow. It's run out of finance from Robin.
Yeah, I would like to know what that is.
Okay, will do.
Okay.
Go ahead.
So moving along here, um, other larger line items would, uh, be, you know, in chemicals and gases, uh, in three oh two, seventy-six thousand and change, and almost all of that is sodium hypochlorite, which is our chlorine solution disinfectant. Uh, the other, uh, chemicals and gases are very small amounts, that's, it's almost exclusively sodium hypochlorite. Uh, heading down, um, forty-six thousand for building and construction materials and supplies. Um, those are mostly, that is, uh, for manhole covers and inlet rates and things of that nature, that's the majority of it. We're also, we'll purchase, you know, a steel plate or two, roadway plates, uh, sometimes, you know, obviously ma- masonry, um, sand and block for re- uh, for repairing sewer lines. Uh, fuels and lubricants, eighty thousand dollars, that kinda speaks for itself, that's mostly, um, it's mostly unleaded gas and diesel fuel for, for the trucks. Uh, there is some heating fuel in there as well. Uh, actually, the heating fuel is down a three oh eight, at eighty-two thousand. So this is all in, in the treatment plant itself, for heat, not only heating, uh, buildings, but also process heating to process, um, sludge digestion. Fifty thousand dollars for vehicles, parts and accessories, that's we, you know, we have our own garage, we do our own work for the most part on our, on our trucks, and, uh, that's to repair our own trucks. Uh, twenty-nine thousand, general hardware and minor tools, that's a variety of tools and, and small pieces of equipment, uh, added out particularly, that's down in, in three twenty-two. And, uh, right, right below three twenty-two and three twenty-five is eighty-six thousand, it's general equipment and parts. Uh, when we, you know, we have to fix various pumps and motors and things like that, uh, we, we usually pull it out of this account. And you can see the breakdown, there's eleven, um, there's eleven different lining items that typically we work on, that consumes that, that funding. Other than that, that's about it for the larger accounts.
Okay, does anybody have any questions for Mr. McIntyre?
No questions? Mr. Blakely, you have any questions?
No.
Mr. Harrison?
No.
Um, Mr. Michelle?
Nothing at this time.
Okay, is Ms. Vaughn on yet?
Uh, she has not joined us.
Okay, alright, then we, I guess we can move on to water.
Good.
Yes.
Excellent, thank, thank you, Council Vice President.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. McIntyre.
Thank you.
So, you know, in essence, you know, again, to reiterate what, what Joe said is, you know, we're about seventy percent of the way through this, um, through the budget process, and I really wanna thank Joan for, uh, you know, putting together this budget. Early on in my tenure, when, when I got here, I mean, I was literally, you know, walking in the door as she was putting this together, and, um, when it comes to putting a budget together, I've never had the, the pleasure of working with somebody that can put it together so well with so much detail. As you guys are well aware, uh, we are undertaking some massive capital improvement projects, namely, the lead service line replacement program, so we're gonna, as we go through the budget, we're gonna be, you know, certainly, you're gonna see some highlights with the NJ I-Bank, uh, and the, uh, the debt service that we're dealing, uh, with, with that. Um, as I mentioned before in many meetings as well, is, you know, when we're looking at these numbers, in a lot of the cases, phase one, and certainly all of phase two, is that we'll be eligible for a fifty percent principal forgiveness once the project's done. But I, I really need to extend my gratitude to the Council for, you know, helping the utility get along so far, uh, relative to that. So, would you like to go the same way we did with sewer, like to go through some of the bigger ticket items?
Yeah, I had a question first before, on page one, before we start.
Yeah.
You have, um, it's like the fourth one down, it's permanent temporary, and there is no budget for two thousand and twenty-one for this. There's a requested budget, but in the, it, I-
Requested budget's four hundred thousand, correct?
The requested budget is four hundred thousand, and then the Council changed it to an adopted budget, so we don't have, um-
You don't have the adopted budget of three, three seventy-three for fiscal twenty?
No, Madam Vice President-
For year twenty.
Yeah, Madam Vice President, if you're looking at the budget, uh, it, it doesn't re- it doesn't say twenty twenty-one, but it, it is on the column for Mayor's Budget, that would be the twenty twenty-one ask.
Okay.
But for some reason, I guess that-
So that, that has doubled, I need an explanation for that, it's almost, well, not quite doubled, but that went up considerably.
Now, the sal- um, did you want me to hand, okay, the salary and wage for, for the fin- this is the Finance Division, okay? And, um, hold on a minute, yeah, cause I printed, hold on. When I, we're working off a paper printout, you know, of that's presumably same file, but the actual, let's just, I don't know what the, that number is there, but the actual, um, fiscal year for Finance, introduced budget is three hundred and thirty-seven thousand seven thirty, uh, for-
That's a different number than I have, seven, three hundred and seventy, no.
Yeah, if, if we stick with the page that Mr. Collins has put up on the screen, it says, uh, Water One, that's page one of the budget. Uh, the number that the Council Vice President is referring to is four hundred thousand eight hundred and seventy-two, and she's saying that it has almost doubled, because when you look at the actual spend from last year, even though the budget is at three hundred and seventy-three thousand, we only spent two hundred and eighty-two thousand seven hundred and thirty-seven. So I don't know if maybe that was due to COVID, but I, I know that it was, um, um, the budget adopted in twenty twenty was three hundred and seventy-three thousand, which is, which is twenty-seven thousand dollars more for this year when you compare it to the Mayor's Budget this year. So it's a twenty-seven thousand dollar jump, uh, Madam Vice President, from last year's adopted budget.
Okay. And that would be why?
Uh, well, since, since salaries and wages, we can, I, I guess, i- if you'd like, we can do what we did with the other, um, um, budget presentations, that the department went straight to the, uh, to the, uh, to the positions. We went to the positions, and then we went and attacked the, uh, the operating budget. If you would like to do that, to get that out of the way, that would probably be very helpful, and then we can just concentrate on the- Okay, is that okay with you guys, uh, um, Joan and, uh, Mark?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's fine, I'm looking at the, yeah, so, okay, okay.
And, and, and as you know, Madam Vice President, the goal has been to bring the number of personnel, staff, actually, to a number where DEP feels comfortable that the city should be operating under. So that is why you will probably continue to see, uh, jumps in certain divisions within the Water Department, because we continue to increase the, the headcount in the department to have the numbers that DEP is comfortable with.
Okay, so, um, Mark, let me ask you, so the vacancies that you have, you have not, the vacancies you have, you haven't budgeted them for the next four months, right?
No, we, we have budgeted for them.
What, why? Are you planning to hire within the next four months?
Well, was it, was it, no, well, we're actually, no, we're not, it's very doubtful that we'll achieve that number in the next four months, but at the beginning of the budget series, you know, when we started, you know, putting the budget together, you know, um, in June, or, you know, prior to that, is yet we, we had additional hires that we still need to, to make, and there are still additional hires we need to make.
Okay.
I think we, I think we overbudgeted, and Joan can answer this question better. We overbudgeted by close to nine hundred thousand dollars or more, and so we're under, we're under on that, but we still have hires that we still need to make, and a significant amount of that.
Okay, because I see three vacancies that are not part of the fiscal twenty-one budget. That was the senior-
Let's use up on the screen there. Yeah, that would be page, page nine of the budget that was supplied by our Council, uh, page nine, and then you are looking at the first division that pops up on that page, and that is, uh, under, uh, Water Finance, and you have a senior cashier, you have two cashiers, senior customer service rep, actually, two ser- senior customer service reps.
Right.
Uh, you have an assistant supervisor, customer service, you have a cashier, you have a senior accountant that is actually, what, you have, uh, you have three positions. The one that the Madam Vice President was referring to is, uh, it shows on the, on the budget that it says vacant, and it's not part of the fiscal year twenty twenty-one, so those are the three vacancies that are there, but you did not budget for in this budget year.
That's, that's correct.
Okay.
Yeah, so I don't know if, if I got you close enough to the documentation that you have in front of you.
So I have a, I have another question on, um, page ten, and it's, it's under labor, it's a laborer. You've got a whole bunch of laborer ones, and then you have this laborer, you have a name in there, but you have no salary.
Page ten?
You gotta show it to me here.
There's actually, yeah, page ten, towards the top, it starts with keyboarding clerk one to purchasing agent.
Okay, okay.
Okay, yeah.
Keyboarding clerk to purchasing agent. Okay, I'm seeing where that is, and then, and then where, what are we looking for here? Why we have an opening, why there's an empty spot?
No, you, you actually have it, Mark, it's laborer, and it's got a name, I'm not gonna mention the name, but there's nothing in there for salary.
Okay, well, it's, it's the, either way, it's gonna be within that salary range, we apologize for that.
No, that, no, no, it doesn't matter, it's not, Mr. Labaton, either way, this is a budget. If this person's getting paid, it should be in there.
Understood.
Yeah, it, it, Mark, it actually says laborer one, and then it says inserted line. There is a, a, a name of a person, and the salary is showing thirty, thirty-three thousand nine hundred and seventy-four, but when you look at the, uh, the budget for this year, it's showing nothing. So I'm not sure if maybe that's an oversight, or maybe it, maybe you just hired this individual, and, eh, but, or, or, or you're looking to hire this individual, and that's why, you know, it's not reflecting an amount out right now as of twenty twenty-one.
Okay.
And, and we cannot mention the name, but-
Yeah, alright, okay.
Yeah.
So I'm, it's, so you can back to me on that, Mr. Labaton, see where that, yeah.
Alright.
Okay, so-
And I know there's a story behind that. No, it's just the story behind it is, anyway. Okay, so the, I can't say the name, but-
I got it, I got it, Mark.
It's this one, okay, okay.
Okay. I'm just glancing through these, do you have anything you want to, well, you don't have too many vacancies, that's for sure.
Yeah.
No, I-
Well, we're getting, we're getting there.
Didn't have much of a hiring plan.
Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Labaton? And if my colleagues have any questions on this budget, this so far? So, how much did you bud- did you budget increase, Director?
What's our budget increasing? About three point nine.
Uh, about three point nine percent.
Three point nine dollars, three, three point nine million dollars from last year to this year.
I'm sorry, three point nine million dollars this year versus last year.
Mr. Lavenberg, I think she's asking you about salary increases, is that correct, Council Vice President?
Yeah.
Well, I'll just say this, when we do the, when the budget is done, you know, the, or the way it's done on my end is, I have a base salary, longevity, if the person is due to get an annual step, that's calculated, and this year, actually, still included a contractual increase, although I never got feedback whether or not, where the status of those things are, and then, uh, you know, and then if there was any, any future longevity owed to that person. That gets aggregated, and, and those are the totals that eventually come into the, into the form.
So, so John, they, they haven't settled their contract yet, right?
No, they haven't.
Uh, no, I don't think so, I, I don't get that information.
Well, well, are they still in contract negotiations?
Uh, that, that is correct, Madam President, but, Vice Pres- uh, Madam Vice President, yes, we're still, uh, under negotiations, but every- But every name that you see here is actually, so that we don't have to get into a situation where, where no money has been budgeted for the increase. What you're seeing there in 2021 is actually what would be the increase from 2020 to 2021 based on a 2% salary increase.
So, Mr. Cruz, let me ask you, do you have to negotiate every contract? You have to renegotiate these longevity raises, or is it a cap on that?
I, I believe some individuals still have longevity, others did not. As, as you know, when they did away with the longevity, there was a number of individuals, I believe, that were grandfather in.
Yeah, but is there a cap on how much they can, how often they can get longevity? Does it stop somewhere?
It.
Or does it have to be renegotiated?
I, I would have to get back to you, Madam President, because it all depends on the position and I guess the title that they're in, what that longevity would, would have been.
Okay, yeah. I don't know if people can hear me. Yeah, I mean, the only thing I wanted, okay.
Good.
Okay, the only thing I want to say on that is, see, there's a sequence between both 2281 and 2286, and it comes repet, you know, recurrently, five years, 10 years, then I think it's 15, 20, 24, 29. And once you meet those, you know, that time in grade, those thresholds, then you traditionally do either for a percentage increase, depending on, you know, the time you got hired.
Longevity is.
Okay.
I understand, I used to be a union president, I understand.
Okay.
What I'm saying is, is there's, is there a cap on how many years these people can continue to receive longevity?
29. As I know.
I'm sorry?
20, the 29th year is the, the last time you can get any longevity.
Okay.
Just to be clear, Madam Vice President, 29 years is the last time you receive an increase in longevity. But if you stay with the city for 50 years, you will receive your longevity for 50 years. You just do not gain additional increases.
Oh, so the longevity is, but isn't that negotiated every contract?
We have, generally, no. We have three tiers of longevity at the moment. If you are hired before a certain date, which was quite some time ago, you have percentage longevity. If you are hired more recently, you have a fixed rate longevity, so just a dollar amount that does not increase at all. It's just, you know, $600 added to your annual salary, or whatever that is. And then finally, for new hires, we have eliminated longevity from, I believe, every contract at this point. So for new hires, there will be no longevity.
Okay.
Yes, and Madam Vice President, and that actually, that, that earning no additional longevity was actually in, that took place, anybody hired after September 1st, 2016. Longevity was eliminated for those individuals.
Okay.
But there, I, I have a list here, and it's, it, it has a lot of items. So I don't, you know, I don't know that it's worth going over them now. And, but I can provide this to you if you would like, and, and the rest of the council.
Yeah, I would appreciate that, thank you.
No problem, you're welcome.
Okay, if anybody have any questions on the personnel? Then I guess we'll move on to the actual budget. Uh, Mr. Labatton?
Excellent, so as, as we mentioned, you know, big ticket items certainly do the, the bond principal payments due to the NJIT, which is there pretty heavily. I don't want to jump around on you too much with these. But again, you know, the big, you know, some of your major costs are certainly your energy, which, under account, 811-001, which would be the PSE and G bill for the filtration plant, sitting at $800,000. The Pennington Reservoir and the Gate House, again, our, our central pumping station, again, that's another large energy expenditure there as well.
So, Director, explain the, the, over the million dollars, it's that, the million dollar increase in your budget. Tell me how that came about.
The $4 million?
It's 3.9 is, is.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Okay, yeah. You're not going to let me off with a simple million.
No, no, okay, 3 million, okay.
Good.
Broken down.
3.9 million, okay.
Joan's going to break it down for you, we have this in one of her charts as well.
Yeah, so, you know, very, just budget only list, you know, fiscal year '21 to fiscal year '20. So the net increase for salaries from fiscal year '21 to '20 was 810,000. Then we have some, you know, the surplus to the current fund actually increased this year 600,000 from 3.3 million 050 to 3 million 650. The logic behind that principally was, from the Chief of Staff, was because we had an approved rate increase, you know, rate ordinance. So he took his pro-rata share of that piece. Debt service, right now, not too much though, increased about 441,000. The water utility budget, operations only, $1.4 million. And then some of the other items like, you know, so they didn't change all that much. Social Security went up 107,000. Or we did have a larger deferred charge than last year that increased by about 83,000. And the overall Water Finance operating budget, that's Division 3000 within the Water, went up about 441,000. So it's dispersed across, you know, quite a number of, you know, categories, given us the, the 3.9. Some in our control and some, you know, out of our control.
Okay, so I have a couple of questions. On, on page three, under Chemical, that's 821.
Okay, oh, okay, that's the million nine?
Yep.
The 1.9, 1,905.
Yep.
Okay, so fiscal year 2020 actual was 6,800. So that's quite a leap.
Yeah, that's not even, that's, that's, that's not even possible.
Yeah.
As you can see. Yeah, that, that number is incorrect. You know, relative to, if we go back to 2019, you're at 1.5.
So where did the 6,8, that's and come from?
So the 68 must be, the.
Yeah, sometimes I think when this download, that's the, the, like, the BA said, there was a column there that included the mayor's budget. I don't know if that got downloaded in a funky way, but.
No, the mayor's budget is 1,905, the adopted budget is 1,905, but in 2020, it says 6,800.
Yeah, that's, well, the, the, that's not correct, you know.
Yeah, I, I do believe that, yeah, that is supposed to include what you had there for the feric and the quick line. As you can see, those numbers in the 2020 should probably all be moved up into that column with the 6,800.
So the quick line, they have 715,200.
Yeah, and that's, and that's, and that, that number's incorrect.
Okay, so Mr. Cruz, when this budget is, when all the changes are made in these budgets, I need these numbers to be more accurate.
Yeah, I, I, I actually, unfortunately, Madam Vice President, I, I don't have, I don't have a number for, for that actual expenditure, but I can, I can definitely provide you the, the spent last year, but it definitely not 6,800, yeah.
It looks, it looks like they were reversed, those numbers, those numbers were reversed.
Yeah, that's what, that, that's what it looked like, and it must have been when, when, so this gets downloaded from Edmund, Madam Vice President. So when, when, when the numbers were pulled from there into this, it's probably, as, as Joan mentioned, they got reversed somehow, but.
But even if, even if the $715,000 was the number, that's quite a leap to go from 715 to 1,905.
Yeah, but the, the, the chemicals is actually all of the ones that you see from one all the way down to 16, all the way down to 16.
Yeah.
So if you look at those numbers on the size, 715, 122,000, 90,000, 32,133. So those numbers make up that bigger number at the top, the 1.9.
Well, you know what, your budget doesn't tell me that, it just tells me that's for chemicals.
Yes, and, and then, so the list of chemicals is right below it, and that is why there is an additional subaccount after 821, and that is why you have 01, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, because it's showing that out of 821, 9, 16 subaccounts are dependent from that 821.
Okay, but it's, but even if, even so, Mr. Cruz, even if that is the total, 715,200 from 2020 to 1,905 is quite a leap.
Yeah, I mean, I can do a quick math here, and let me, 700, 800, 900, that's already 1 million, 1,300. You're looking already at, at, at the numbers, if I'm looking at those 16 lines, you're looking at approximately maybe like 1.2 to 1.3 million. When you add all those subaccounts, all on the last column where it says fiscal year 2020 actual.
No, but that's not what, that's not, that's not what I'm asking. You told me that the 1,905 was the sum total of all these chemicals listed below. So if I go over to 2020, and I assume that 715,200 was the some chemicals that were used in 2020, that 715,2 to 1,905 is a leap.
Yeah, I would, I would have to get, I would, I would, this is something that with a phone call could be resolved, but unfortunately, because the budget is at 6 o'clock, Alfonso is no longer in the office. But that's something that we can, that we can actually take care of within like a two-minute call.
Okay, because, because you may want to, you may want to look down at the other totals, you know, because the main water treatment equipment went from 592 to 800,000, you know. So I'm just, I just need to know.
Okay, I, I.
What's going on there?
Yeah, I made a note to myself here, Madam Vice President, and I will definitely provide this number first thing in the morning tomorrow.
Okay.
And, and I apologize, but yes, that's something that could be definitely easily resolved within a call, one phone call.
Okay, so, and then I have, of course, I have another question. It's number 826 on page four. Water treatment waste residual expense.
Okay, and that actually also has subaccounts underneath, Madam Vice President. It has eight subaccounts underneath it.
No, I understand that, but I'm looking at the, I'm looking at the total, the sum total. And when I, when I look at 2020, the sum total of all of those.
Oh, got it, got it, okay, also confirm that.
And that, that says 222. If you total up all those in, in 2020, it doesn't come to 222.
Correct.
So I, this is confusing me.
Okay, so.
And if you total, if you total, no, it just, unless it carries over to the next page, I don't know. Mr. Cruz, we got to come up with a better budget than this.
So, but, and, and this is why a couple of, couple of meetings ago, we actually have, we requested counsel, and we're grateful that you agreed to allow us to go with the other software, so that we can. Yeah, so we wouldn't be having this conversation or having to make a phone call if we were using that software right now. We would only go in there and plug in the numbers. And could have resolved there right now.
So you need Alfonso, he needs to look down these numbers and see where they're off.
I'm confirming them tomorrow, yes.
Because a lot of them are off, yeah.
Yes, but for the purpose of the budget hearing, Madam Vice President, if we stick to the request, to the, to the adopted budget last year, we can still, you know, we, we have, you know, at, at least that is the same budget amount that was requested last year, that was adopted by council.
Yeah, but, see, my gauge is that when I see that it increased dramatically, I, I want some answers.
Sure.
You know, regardless of what you've requested, regardless of what was approved, you know, after the budget, the actual budget was presented, I mean, I don't know, I need to see why this was, why it increased, or, or did we just carry that number over for the hell of it because we got it approved in 2020? Okay, so it's the same thing if you go to page five. And it's number 835, Maintenance of TND Means.
835. Two million bucks. And then it goes.
Yes, again, again, it's, again, it seems to be an additional, additional problem there as well in that column.
Yeah.
Yeah, the 1, the 1.5 number is actually very consistent, but the, what we have there in the 2020 actual is, is not, and, and would not be, not be correct.
Well, I need to see those actual numbers because it gives me a feeling, you know, because that's the only way I can ask you questions, why increased, or why decreased, or where we're going to save money.
Okay, and, and certainly jumping back into like 2018, 2017, you know, those, those numbers seem to line up more in, in, in line with that.
Just very confusing. And again, on page six, under Miscellaneous, 841.
Yep, yep, again.
What is miscellaneous?
Under 841, and then which account would this be? Or what's the number?
A million dollars, 841, I don't know what kind of thing.
The number, it's case, case, and the number is.
Oh, 841, 841?
Yeah.
Well, miscellaneous is, is exactly what it is miscellaneous, that's something that doesn't, wouldn't necessarily fall into any particular category, any, any budgeted item. And, and again, that, that seems to be about the, the average number that we do average going back over time.
Well, yeah, but, but none of, none of these numbers are averaging with the 2020 budget. And I, I just, it concerns me that it just increases that much.
I, I certainly agree with that. But again, we, we've had numbers going back to 2015 where we were at 800,000, 2017 and 970.
Yeah, but I, I go, we go by the, like, the previous years, you know, previous year.
Right.
Yeah, I understand what I'm saying, so when it's, when it, when that budget doubled, you know, and I know that in 2020, it was approved for, you know, what it was, but it's, it, it's still just, I just want to know.
Okay, very good.
Yeah, I can, I can do an analysis on the whole thing, something a little easier to read.
20 is.
Yeah.
Okay. If any.
Immediately, yes, that's, it's tough.
Yeah.
Going the other way.
Okay, do any of my colleagues have any questions for the Director on your budget? Do you see anywhere that you might want to cut? I guess silence means no, yeah.
Counsel President, or Counsel Vice President?
Yes, Mr. Harrison.
Yeah, I kind of agree with you, though, we just got to verify these numbers. These numbers are like off, and, yeah, we just got to verify to make sure that we're correct.
Yeah, okay, great, yeah. Well, I mean, Mr. Cruz, Director, are you going to take care of that and get us an explanation on these? And you may have to, Alfonso would go down each line item because it's very confusing. And you may have to get, Alfonso would go down each line item because it's very confusing. Okay.
All right.
If there's no more questions, I thank you, Director.
Uh, I thank you, Counsel Vice President, for your patience and understanding. We will see you next Tuesday.
Uh, Counsel Vice President, would you like to go to public portion?
Yeah, please, please do. Don't leave.
Ladies and gentlemen, this is the public portion of the Trenton City Council Budget Hearing for Trenton Water and Sewer, a special meeting that was anticipated tonight, was not necessary and was canceled. Uh, accordingly, this is public portion for budget items only related to the Trenton Sewer, uh, and Trenton Water Works.
If we're on public portion, please.
Uh, once again, ladies and gentlemen, if you wish to, uh, speak with regard to the Trenton City. Uh, Sarah?
This is Jerry Goret.
Hi, Ms. Goret.
Yes, Ms. Goret.
Um, can you speak to me? Oh, yes. Um, I, I, I am not able to look at the budget. Um, actually, right now, I just, you know, say to, um, Mr. Cruz, the Business Administrator, and, um, uh, Mr. Uh, the Director, Mark Latenberg, this got to be better because, you know, the city, right now, we are in a, you know, we are in a bad, uh, situation here financially. And these numbers, you know, this is a budget meeting. It doesn't sound like you're prepared. So I'm just asking as a constituent and a resident of the city and a taxpayer that, you know, you guys got to do a little better. And any software system you get, you still got to insert this information. So if this, it, so if the, uh, entries are not correct, you're still going to get, uh, a report that it does not represent, um, this, uh, the, the, actually the financial status of the city or the financial status of a department. So, you know, let's do a little bit better, um, you know, going forward in these budget hearings. Because, you know, we're spending time and we're trying to, you know, participate and, you know, address these issues, these upcoming issues, and we can't do that if you're not presenting accurate numbers. That's all. Thank you.
Is anybody else supposed to be recognized for a public portion for the budget hearing for Trenton Water Works and Trenton Sewer? Uh, Trenton, uh, Madam Chairman, Mr. Mike Rinallo would be like to be recognized.
Yes, Mr. Rinallo, go ahead.
Uh, thank you for the recognition. Um, I just want to echo Ms. Goret's sentiment that, um, I tuned into this meeting hoping to learn a little bit more about the Water Works budget, and it seems like they came woefully underprepared to present their data and budget to the, to the council. So, um, I'm, I'm just going to leave it at that because she said essentially everything I wanted to say, but it just seemed a little, uh, a little light on the, uh, on the, on the numbers. Thank you very much for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you.
Uh, thank you, ladies and gentlemen. Uh, anybody else wish to be recognized by the Trenton City Council for, uh, public comments on the Trenton Water Works or Trenton Sewer budget hearing process? Uh, seeing none, do I have a motion to close public portion?
So, Matt?
A motion by Counsel Vice President Colwell Wilson to close public portion. I have second, second by Mr. Michelle, uh, all in favor of closing public portion?
Aye.
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 I have four. That is, what I have. Thank you. Uh, public portion is closed, uh, and, uh, that is it for the evening's agenda. Uh, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So would.
So would.
A motion by Counsel Vice President, I have a second by Mr. Michelle, uh, all in favor of adjourning?
Aye.
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 Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Adjourned at 6:25 PM.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.